Come on, let's give God a hand, stop the play. Y'all, everybody, y'all ain't excited? Let's give God a hand, stop the play. He just able to stand with us, his train all over the building. Part of each time, it's a mystery. Ain't no reason to be sad. Come on, raise your hands, you better clap for him with a baton. There is the way to the city. All the people in this city, they're quiet. They are about to speak out. There is the Lord over the heart of the county, I represent. Amen, amen. Come on, let's give this choir another hand. We are just excited, amen, to be here for this glorious occasion. Amen, this is the annual musical, amen, of the Hardeman County Commission for Black History. Amen, amen, and we are just glad to be able to see your smiling faces. We are glad that you joined us on today. And we come, amen, to celebrate our history, our heritage. And we come together to lift up the name of Jesus Christ. Amen, if you have a program, amen, we're gonna follow the program. If you don't have a program, we would ask that you raise your hand. Amen, Sister Ella Hitchens, she will get you a program if you would like. Amen, we definitely want to invite you to know what is going on, amen. So at this time, we're gonna have a welcome, amen, from Sister Clara Wallace, followed by two selections, amen, from our choir. Amen, the selections they're gonna start with is, ain't gonna let nobody turn me around. Amen, also trouble in my way, amen. But before we tell everybody that we ain't gonna let nobody turn us around, and before we get the trouble out of our way, amen, we're gonna welcome Sister Clara Wallace to give us the welcome. Let's give her a hand.
I was really enjoying the choir here. Really come up and greet you. Like I said, welcome to everyone, and good afternoon to all of God's children, that includes all of us. Thank God for our lives and for allowing us to be here on today to pastor young and all the members who are here on today. We recognize you on today and say that we're glad that you're here with us. And to say thanks to the host church, Chapel Chapel, give yourself a hand, Chapel Chapel, all of you. It's a blessing to stand before you to bring this voice of welcome. You're welcome to, I like to say, give a view from the pew. All of you who are sitting in your pews on today, we want to... And we want to also to say, give a shout out from the choir, they've already given us a beginning there. When you think of a musical, we want to think of the fact that we want to sing a song because we're happy, sing because we're free. We look our voice in the sanctuary. All those things represent the music that comes from our lips as we think about a musical. Today, we want you to sit, relax, and to participate and to enjoy what the choir has prepared for us on today. And we pray God, from whom all blessings flow. Whether it's going to be a Negro spiritual or hymn of praise, maybe something from the old school, all of us who are sixty and older, kind of come to old school. Some of us are here to understand what the old school is about. Whether it's a song that you heard on the radio, or a song that you can pick up and just bring it up on your computer. Whether it's one of those kind of songs that you get, you just kind of wanna go right, hand stumping, have your hand clapping. Get with it for a bit, for a bit longer. Hand clapping, stomping, it doesn't matter. It feels beautiful, you think of music, you think of instruments that we have. But sometimes if there aren't any instrument around, you know, God has given us that voice, he's given us our hand clapping, our foot stumping, that we can bring out a song in our heart. And then we bring forth to our lips for you to know that we all want to praise God on today. We want to tell our story with two songs, what Pastor Young has said on today. So we will sit back and listen to all of their say, I'm sure during the month of February, we've all sung the song, "Lift Every Voice and Sing." So we want you to lift your voices today, whether it be verbal or just silent, whether you sit there and let the music just let you think back how it used to be and how it is now. But either way it goes, we're just praising God, and we're still here today to enjoy each other, to look around and to see each other, and to know that there are some of us who are, who have come up what we call, some people say the roadside mountain. I heard somebody say one day, do you wanna go on the smooth side? Where you don't have any traction? There's no, yeah, there's no traction, you slide back down. You go from the rough side, then you can appreciate how you got there. And then look back and say, God has taught us where we were, where we are now. So we just want to say, welcome to each one of you, and I'm glad to be here at Chapel. I don't come as often as I would like, but you know, this is my mother's home church. Definitely, Chapel Chapel has a place in my heart. Pastor Jesse William, up there, Bishop William, he used to call my father his second deacon. We know that he was all part of this family. So I'm just anticipating, enjoying the choir on today. And Pastor Young has worked so hard, and the young lady here, all of you, we just thank you for what you have done today. So we're gonna sit back, relax, and see what you have for us, and also just know that we're here to support each other. And thank you all for being here for the Heart and County Commission for Black History.
As you know, here, pictures just waving your hand. What a mighty, mighty God. We serve, amen, amen. Thank you choir. What a way to start off this musical. Amen, you know, there was a time when we didn't have nice buildings like this, where we could gather, and we could have pianos, guitars, and drums. All we had was a pad of the fetus, Sister Clara said, and a clap of a hand, after what they called a bush hopper, amen. But if you just look around the room, look at what God has done for us. Slavages couldn't have no musicals. But actually glad that the Lord freed us from slavery. And Bible says, "He who surrenders is free," amen. Amen, and at this time, amen, we're gonna have our scholarship appeal. Sister Ramona Spencer is not able to be with us today. So we're gonna ask our president of our commission, Sister Betty Boyd, to come with the scholarship appeal, followed by announcements and recognition of commission members. And we also have one of the founders in here. I'm not gonna tell you who he is, but everybody knows. Amen, let's give Sister Betty a hand, ask her.
For those of you who have a program, you can look back at your programs, you've got history on there. This is our forty-fifth year of existence. This is our forty-third year of giving out scholarships. On saying that, I want you to know, we have recipients in this room. They're ready to receive our scholarships. And we hope we got future recipients out of here also. But this is an important month to go to hear our younger generation better themselves. And when we first started off, it was only for our college, a historical college. And then we changed our Bible laws a little bit. It's for any school that helped you better your life. You may not get as much as somebody that go to a historical black college now, but you get something to help you along the way, 'cause everybody buys books.
That's right.
Everybody got expenses in school. So that's what we look at. But the good thing about it is, we wanna support all young folks in being a better person in this world. About through education and some path. It's not just for your college, not through your college, we even trade students now. To help anybody that wanna help themselves. 'Cause everybody not college matured.
That's right.
Everybody don't wanna go to college either. Some people just wanna get a good trade and make a good living. And this time it is, we got a couple of them that got some money. But the thing about it is, you give to the hoods, this is going back into our society. It may not be this specific community. Because most of the young folks at my church, they got our scholarships. They're no longer resident of this part of Tennessee, or even in Tennessee. But they're prostitutes, they're making a living for themselves, and trying to help their commission home. Which is a good thing. I have one church member who has nine kids. Out of her nine kids, I think eight of her kids got our scholarships. But she always encourages them to apply. You cannot get anybody's scholarship if you don't apply your song and number. So grandparents, parents, aunties and aunts, if you got somebody that's going off to any kind of school, encourage them to apply for the scholarships. 'Cause if you don't apply for it, you sure can't get. If you get money, kids, you wanna see that money go to good work for your family and well to mine. Everybody, that's right, everybody. As of our meeting this month, this committee has given out two hundred and twenty-three scholarships. You know, we had a scholarship for a forty-year college, it was two hundred dollars, back in eighty-two. Now we give up to a thousand for a historical black college and five hundred for everything else. And we give out six thousand dollars a year. It's a set, three thousand to central and three thousand to militant. But if one school doesn't use it, we adjust it. Still try to get it, put it back in the community. 'Cause the whole community supports us. And this thing, I wanna let you know, most of all, important thing about it, if you have, if you help folks become a better person in society, you got, you can say one thing about, for the youth, come on, that ain't mine. That ain't mine, I'm gonna up your can or something. Mine's like they're trying to make a living for themselves in his family, you know what I'm saying? That's the thing you gotta work on. 'Cause one thing about this society, they make it to negative. More so than the positive. I'm a person that I always been positive about young folks going to study. I personally gonna have a child in this world, but I've encouraged many young folks to educate yourself in any way you can. Because I love people, and I love my people. Especially my good people. And I work at the prison, I know the bad people too. And not all of them are bad, some of them just didn't have the right guy. But I was in the back, I know. But the thing about it, you encourage your young folks to be good people, and not be politicians going on out there. And if you believe what I just said, give a decent donation a day, so that it can help our scholarship fund. Everything we do in the month of February, we try to put back into the scholarship fund to help somebody else in charity. Maybe not mine, maybe not yours, somebody's charity is the scholarship. And Ms. Yakira is one of our recipients. Is there any others that received our scholarships in the building?
Both of my children.
Okay, this is our kids' Eve. But you had to encourage them to do it, you did not. So please, encourage your kids to do things they need to do. So they can help themselves. Thank you, God bless.
Amen, amen, thank you, Sister Betty Boyd, for that scholarship appeal. If we can have two of the commission members to come and hold the baskets, please. Two of our commission members, two of our commission members to come, hold. Two of our commission members, two of our commission members to come hold the basket. Amen. This is someone that's a good ground. Amen. Someone that's a good ground. And we'll start in the back with this side, amen, just like we do in church. Once this side comes, then we'll start with this side in the back, amen. Does anyone give? Know us bound here, now Father, Hallelujah, we come thanking you, Lord, for another opportunity to give. We ask you in the name of Jesus to bless this offering. Blessing in our son, Jesus, that we do pray. Then everybody say amen. Amen. Commission members, uh, do we have cash yet? I was asked, do we have cash yet? Not yet. We working on it. Initially, we'll get it. Amen, we'll get it. We moving it, we moving the commission to the twenty-first century. We'll get it. You know, Sister Lisa and myself, we the youngest members of the commission, Pastor Ellis, so we, uh, yeah, we getting there, we getting there. There's something else to work on for the next week, amen, amen. And now, at this time, we'll have announcements, uh, announcements from the floor. Anyone have any announcements, uh, that would like to share? We know that next Sunday at two P M., we will have our county-wide worship service, the commission will, and our guest preacher will be, stand up, Reverend Tony Ellis, and Pope Joe Missneal Baptist Church. And we will be at the Union Hill Missneal Baptist Church in the big center white building, amen. Amen, at two P M., that's see First Lady Chris with us, amen, amen. First Lady E. Barrett, amen, amen. And, uh, Pastor Cora Buffett, amen, of the Union Hill Church. So we'll be inviting everybody out to the county-wide worship service next Sunday at two P M., amen. Amen. Any other announcements coming from the floor, any other announcements?
Thank you. Give our praise and thanks to God, to everyone, to Pastor John, to my friend, oh, that pastor, yes. Amen. To all the ministers, uh, there will also be a musical tonight at the Louise Theater. Uh, the Hartman County Mass Choir is putting it on. Lead singer, the Salem Humanae, along with, uh, King Carroll, I think that's his name, you know me? Carroll, amen. And I know sometimes stuff get a little confusing, you know how the devil is, but our money also will go to the scholarship fund. So if somebody didn't, didn't make it today, if you know somebody, please send them on over to the Louise Theater. There is no fee. It's a free admission, but we do ask that you, just like Sister Betty did, we ask that you would give a generous gift. Because normally, when we in a place like that, you know, like the pastor already said, we used to couldn't do things like that. But God has blessed us. I mean, He really blessed us. If you feel like it, when you leave here, go home, get you a bite to eat, come on over to the Louise Theater at six o'clock. Thank you.
Amen, amen. Thank you, Brother Levi, for that announcement. Our youth is gonna be taken care of, I know that. Amen, our youth is gonna be taken care of. Amen. Any other announcements, any other announcements? Y'all look so good today, amen. Got a good-looking crowd in the house, amen. Y'all don't believe, y'all look good. Well, if nobody told you you looked good today, I did, amen. Amen. We glad to have you here. And just, if I can, uh, if it's okay, I just want you, uh, everybody to flip to the back, amen, of the program. And, uh, if you have, when you have time, amen, because I know we've been around forty-five years, so this history is quite extensive. But I want you to check it out when you get some time, amen. You'll be, uh, amazed at some of the things that this commission has been able to do with the scholarships and for our youth. Amen. And here at Calum Chapel, Missneal Baptist Church, we are honored, amen, to host this this year. Amen. Bishop Williams, uh, the commission was started, was it started in your office or just in the sanctuary or where? Right here in the sanctuary, right here in the sanctuary. We got the names listed, but we ain't gonna go through the history right now. But, uh, it was started in this church, in this spirit all the way through the county, amen. Three names of this, okay. Arthur Harris? What's the next name? Harry? Harris, okay. Reverend Grass? Okay. But we thank God, amen, amen, for the commission, amen. If there are no other announcements, amen, we would like for all of the Hartman County Commission for Black History members to stand. Amen. We would like to recognize all of our commission members. Amen. Amen, amen. We thank God for all of our Hartman County Commission members, amen. Arthur Marcel, okay, that was another name. It came back to him, Arthur Marcel. And we're just crazy glad that the bishop is able to be here. Amen. For him to have been here in nineteen-eighty, when it was just an idea, to be in this room now forty-five years later, that's a blessing, amen. When it all came back, amen, amen, came back, it was a full circle moment. Amen, amen. And so, uh, if you have your program, we sit next, uh, two selections, will be Old Time Religion and then God is My Everything. Old Time Religion and God is My Everything. Believe it or not, we halfway through the program, amen, amen.
Every Christian ought to stand up and testify. For God I live, and for God I'm willing to die. Clap your hands and clap your feet. You may be walking every time you're free. And if you got it, I need it all. You ought to lose your sunshine. Every Christian ought to stand up and testify. For God I live, and for God I'm willing to die. Clap your hands and clap your feet. You may be walking every time you're free. And if you got it, I need it all. You ought to lose your sunshine. Oh, you're mighty mighty able. You're mighty mighty great. You may not believe, but you're able. But you can say, "I love you more." Oh, I... I love you more than any God. You say, "Oh..." I want somebody to know that I know me. Wouldn't say a word out of this way in my name. And if you got it, I need it all. You ought to lose your sunshine. Oh, you're mighty mighty able. You're mighty mighty great. You may not believe, but you're able. But you can say, "I love you more." Oh, I... I love you more than any God. Say, "Oh..." I want somebody to know that I know me. Wouldn't say a word out of this way in my name. And if you got it, I need it all. I want to do the same. I want to do the same. You ought to lose your sunshine. Oh, I know you. I know you. I love you. I love you. The reason I love you. The reason I love you. He's been so good. You hold me up early. Early in the morning. Oh, please. Give my right mind. Yeah, I love you. Yeah, I love you. Yeah, I love you. So, I love you. I love you, I love you. I love you, I love you. I love you, I love you. Yeah, I love you. Yeah, I love you. So, I love you. Do you love you? Do you love you? You ought to love you. I love you, I love you, I love you. I love you, I love you, I love you. I love you more than any God. Say, "Oh..." I want somebody to know that I know me. Wouldn't say a word out of this way in my name. And if you got it, I need it all. You ought to lose your sunshine.
Come on, man. Come on, Pastor.
How many know God is your everything?
Yeah.
Come on, don't fool me. I said, "How many know God is your everything?"
Yeah.
Can I hear a little bit of time, a little bit of time, please? Come on, clap your hands with the... Come on, ladies, come on.
Right back.
Oh, God is my everything. God is my everything. He's my joy.
He's my joy.
Oh, yeah. He's my hope. What does God have? Oh, he's my... And we're... Yeah. Oh, God is...
God is.
God is my everything. Yeah. Oh, God is...
God is.
Yeah.
My everything.
I know God is my everything. We are your...
My joy.
We are your... He's my hope.
He's my hope.
I tell you, we are... And we're... Yeah. Yeah, come on. Oh, God is...
God is.
God is my everything. One more time, one more time.
God is my everything.
God is my everything. Woo. He's my joy.
He's my joy.
Yeah. He's my hope.
He's my hope.
Oh, yeah. We're my... We're with him. Yeah. Oh, God is my everything. 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 He's my... We're always together. God is my everything. God is my everything. We're always together. We're here, my everything. Yeah. God is my everything. Hey. God is... You can go. In the time of trouble. God is... God is my everything. Oh. Yeah.
God is my everything.
Yeah. God is my everything. Yeah. God is my everything. We're not... Oh, that you know. We're not thinking about God. Yeah, we're not thinking about God. Oh, I can't... Thinking about what he's done. Thinking about what he's done. My everything is here. My everything is... So, it's... Oh, my... He's my... And we're with him. Oh, my everything. Oh, my... He's my Lord and He's my everything. He's my Lord and He's my everything. My everything. My everything. God is my everything.
God is my everything.
God is my everything. God is my everything. God is my everything. Everybody... I just think about... I'm... I'm... I don't get it. When I... You want to... Oh, my... Do you love me? Do you love me? Do you love me? I... My everything. My everything. Oh, yeah. I feel you. Yeah, I feel you. I feel you. Yeah, I feel you. I feel you. Oh, yeah. I feel you. Yeah. I feel you. I feel you. I feel you. God is my everything. God is my everything.
Yes. Yes. Come on, man, boy. Yeah. Yeah. Yes. Yeah.
Listen, some of y'all may not know. Why I cry sometimes. Few years ago, my wife was sick. Didn't know she was no baby, but I called on Jesus. And when I came home one Sunday morning, when she was on her lap in the bed, she started sleeping, then walking on the floor. That's how I know you're here. You're the white maker. You're the white woman. God is... And sometimes, when we come to church, I need some help to move us. When I think of goodness and Jesus. Oh, that enough for you, my son. Oh, how we doin'? God is... God is... God is my everything. I feel you. I feel you, my everything.
Yeah.
God is my everything. My everything.
That sounds good, that sounds...
Lord have mercy.
Light woo.
In the courtroom.
Yeah.
Old folks would say, "Doctor..."
In the courtroom.
In the courtroom.
Yeah.
When you're... When you're... Lively.
Yeah.
Water when you're thirsty.
Yeah. When you're hungry.
God is...
I am. Come on, Pastor.
Only reason why we made it through slavery, only reason why we made it through segregation, only reason why we made it through the crack epidemic, only reason why we made it through mass incarceration, only reason why we made it through Donald Trump, part one, only reason why we gonna make it through Trump, part two. God is... And man, I'm not about to preach. They say, "Talk." I was important to black music throughout history. But Lord have mercy.
Have mercy.
Amen. Really, Jackson, when you put a preacher behind all this, good singing. Lord have mercy, but I'm glad I got this wrote out. I'm gonna have mercy, Lord have mercy. Let's get this choir another...
Woo.
Amen, amen. I really appreciate just to give them a break so they can catch their breath. I just want, just for a few moments, amen, to talk on this, just thought. Telling our story through music. Telling our story through music. That is our theme. Amen, for this musical, telling our story through music. Telling our story is important for our survival as a people. Telling our story is important to our legacy as a people. Telling our story through music is one of the best things that we have come up with as a people. The late, great black writer Zora Neale Hurston once said, "If you're silent about your pain, they'll kill you and say you enjoy it." And because we have taken our voices and used it to say what needed to be said to tell our story, we've been able to sing about how we made it over. Some of y'all know the song that the Queen of Gospel, Mahalia Jackson, was saying. She was saying, "Tell me how I got over." Tell me, how did I make it over? We had a mighty hard time coming over. You know, my soul looked back and wondered, "How did I make it over?" Now, one of the ways that we've been able to make it over, people of God, is by telling our story through music. Yeah, when we started to examine how black music has aided us in our survival as a people in this country, we should be grateful for the power of music. Yeah, we've used music as a form of resistance. Some of us talk about the cityans at the lunch counters. We talk about the slave rebellions like the one led by Matt Turner. We talk about the underground railroad where Harriet Tubman led slaves to freedom. But one thing that we don't have to give credit to is how our music has been a form of resistance for us. So, the spirituals, they allowed us to talk to God, even though we had to work from can to can't work no more. The spirituals connected us to God when we dealt with conditions that tried to disconnect us from our humanity. The spirituals helped us to understand that even though folk call us Negroes, or boys, or girls, or colored, we still were children of God. The spirituals let us know that even when it looked like our back was against the wall, that God was still on our side. Choirs, choirs, they helped us fuel our existence by showing black folks together in unity. Whenever you can get a group of people like this together, it ain't no fighting, it ain't no pissing, it ain't nobody pulling out no knives. It ain't nobody saying, "Let me go to my car, I'm coming right back." Then you creating an environment of unity. And through singing together, clapping our hands together, praising the Lord together, we've been able to encourage each other. I just came to tell somebody this afternoon, there's power in music.
It's the truth, it's the truth.
Church, you think about songs like, "A Change Is Gonna Come" by Sam Cooke, "What's Going On?" by Marvin Gaye. "We The People Who Are Dark and Blue" by Kirkaz Mayfield. Say it loud, "I'm Black and I'm Proud" by James Brown. "Someday We'll All Be Free" by Danny Hathaway. It shows us how important it is to tell our story through music. Because what comes from the heart?
Reaches.
Reaches the heart. And then what comes from the soul reaches the soul. So, when we tell our story through music, we're actually connecting ourselves to our ancestors. Let me help you. When a grandmother can sing "Amazing Grace" with her granddaughter. When a grandson who's a pastor can sing the same church song in church that he used to hear his granddaddy sing in church. When we see a mother singing to her child the same song that was sang to her as a child, we see that music connect us with our ancestors. And if we wanna connect the freedom struggle that we have to our youth, and inspire them to pick up the torch and keep it going, we can, we must, and we will continue to tell our story through music. But as I leave you, I'm reminded of something I saw in this movie called "The Lion King." Back in 2019, they had a redo of the movie "The Lion King." Shortly after, you saw it, Mufasa, he had a stern talk with Simba about disobeying him and venturing to the area where the light doesn't touch. Simba said, "Yeah, we're pals, right?" Mufasa said, "Yeah, right." Simba then said, "And we'll always be together, right?" Mufasa responded, "Simba, let me tell you something my father told me. Look at the stars. The great kings of the past, they look down on us from those stars. So, whenever you feel alone, just remember those kings will be up there to guide you, and so will I." Simba replied, "But I can't see 'em, Dad." Mufasa said, "Keep looking, son, keep looking." And I want us to capture that same mindset from this musical when it comes to telling our story through music. Whenever we feel alone, and we desire to have a connection with our ancestors, we ought to just keep singing. When it looks like we taking five steps as a people, but now with this new government, we're about to take ten steps back as a people, let us keep singing. Don't you ever let anybody take your voice, child, in God. No matter how much hell you catch, you better keep on singing. Amen, amen. Are we ready?
Amen.
You think it's your name the same name?
Yeah.
Telling our story.
Telling our story.
There we go.
So, we're at the end of the service. We have two, amen, two selections. And we took you from the spirituals. We took you through our history now, we to the 90s and the 2000s. Amen. He's able, and I trust in God. Amen. Followed by a vote of thanks from Sister Betty Boy and a benediction from the Reverend B.L. Jackson. Amen. Let's get our choir here. And thank you for letting me do that, and so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
How many of y'all singing praise the most?
Yeah. Ha, ha.
Y'all the most.
Yeah.
You just lift up that hand.
Yeah.
I know that God is able, He will tell them.
Yeah, yeah.
Rested on your side. See the sign. He's been a foreman in the fire. Time after time. All of His sin. Most of His blood. And what He did for me, oh, God, please, oh, to me. So, I trust in God. My Savior, the one. Who will never fail. He will never fail. I trust in God. My Savior, the one. Who will never fail. He will never fail. Perfect to me. All of this. I know the other person who I know. I love myself. So, it fills my soul. It fills my soul. Praying the reason He is dead, God, all day long. So, I trust in God. My Savior, the one. Who will never fail. He will never fail. Why? I trust in God. My Savior, the one. Who will never fail. He will never fail. He won't fail you. He won't fail you now. No, my God. He'll never fail, never fail, never fail, never fail. I thought too long, maybe. I thought too long, maybe.
I sought the Lord, and He heard, and He answered. I sought the Lord, and He heard, and He answered. That's why I trust Him. That's why I trust Him. I sought the Lord, and He heard, and He answered. I know, yes I do. I know, yes I do. Yes I do, that's why. I sought the Lord, yes I do. I know, yes I do. Yes I do, that's why. I sought the Lord, yes I do. Yes I do, yes I do. Yeah, 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 He heard my cry. He heard my cry, He heard my cry. Yes I do, yes I do, yes I do. Yes I do, oh, my God. In peace, everyone. Yes I do. That's why I trust Him. Yes I do, and He heard, and He answered. I sought the Lord, yes I do. That's why I trust Him. That's why I trust Him. My Savior, who will never fail. He will never fail. I trust in God.
Yeah, yeah.
Lord have mercy. Lord have mercy. The spirit, God's a lady's not gonna say nothing. The spirit is in this.
The spirit in here. Yesa, yesa, yesa.
Somebody in here getting what they need today.
Yes, yes.
Somebody came here looking at the party. Somebody came here looking at little come up. Somebody came here confused. Somebody came here depressed, but I just believe that 'cause you in here, you feeling a little bit better. I sought the Lord, He heard. I know you in here, but this is a high life. He answered.
Yes, he do.
I sought the Lord. I sought the Lord, and He heard, and He answered. I sought the Lord, and He heard, and He answered. I sought the Lord, and He heard, and He answered. That's why I trust Him. That's why I trust in God. My Savior, who will never fail. He will never fail. I trust in God. I promise you too, I promise, I promise. Woo, that felt good.
Yeah.
Hardly leaving that with a loss.
Yeah.
It's personal because when you know you done had some stuff that didn't have no answers for, and He gave you. I'm talking to some folks that done been sick, and you know you can heal your body. So you know the only reason why you alive is because He touched you. I'm talking to some folks that was in some trouble, and you know you couldn't afford no lie, but you ain't in jail.
Yesa, yesa.
One thing about black folks, when we in that dark street, had a place. They took our names. They took everything from us. But look around the room, we still together. Yeah, yeah. It sold us away from our families. But we still together. Ain't nothing stronger than the black family.
Hallelujah.
Well, my time has been spent. I've enjoyed being where I was emceeing today.
Good job, good job.
Now, we gonna have our other, but first of all, let's give these musicians. And in the talk, I talked about grandfathers and grandsons. This is a grandfather playing the guitar with his grandson. So we see it. Generations connected.
Yeah.
And then the dynamic, Sister Yacena. She played these musicals. And she claimed this is her first one. If this was her first one, we ain't seen nothing yet.
Yeah. Yesa.
And my classmate, Mauricio Boardard, AKA P.I.A. Sister Betty, are we gonna be able to have this again here next year?
Yeah.
Amen. Come on, Sister Betty, let's give us a vote of thanks. Amen.
First of all, I want to start out with, thank you, Kama Chat, for hosting. Thank you to Sister Yacena and your associate, Y. And thank everybody who came out to make this program, what it was today. Now, my sister, Sister Yacena, this is not our first rodeo with the black people. She was a teenager. She and Sister Ellen, and two other young ladies performed at our banquet, they was up. And we was glad to have. She ain't even received us off again. She been performing all about the black people for five. You supporters in your family support us when you young, and we appreciate you supporting us now. Most of all, we thank each and every one of you for your donation. And Betty Jackson, baby. Betty Jackson, we appreciate you and the founders who had the massive.
Go ahead on. Bishop.
Bishop, you and the songs who had the foresight to start this group. And Miss Huileen, Miss Huileen, we thank you for coming representing your hood today.
Yeah.
We thank each and every one of you for supporting us. We hope you continue to support us. And if we can do something for young black folks, bless. But you got to encourage them to fill it out and do the whole process.
Right.
You can give one to Scott, should not get it. If you don't do the whole process, like give us something we need to prove that you're back in still. So, support us and we'll support you.
Amen, amen. We are glad, I didn't see Sister Huileen. Wait in here. Oh, okay. Sister Huileen, amen, my cousin, amen. Do you have anything you would like to say?
No, I'm just enjoying everything.
Yes, ma'am, we glad to have you, yes, ma'am.
I'm just enjoying.
Glad to have you, glad to have you, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. And so, at this time, amen, Reverend B.L. Jackson's gonna give us our benediction, and we hope to see each and every one of you next Sunday at 2:00 p.m. at the Union Hill Church for our countywide worship service. If you think Pastor Ellis can sing, you ought to hear a preacher. Our next Sunday, amen.
Let us stand. Father, we're grateful and thankful for this great song of praise today. And thank you for all of us having time to celebrate in your worship. And God, we know that you have an everlasting song in our praise. After we leave this place, we know that there was a sweet Holy Spirit in this place. And as we leave, we hope to cherish what we saw, and we can continue to allow you to order steps as we live someday today. For God be known, as we leave, God, we thank you for ordering our steps, thanking that you continually.
Hallelujah.
Allow the words of our mouth.
Yesa.
And the meditation of our heart.
Yesa.
Forever be acceptable unto you. So, God, we give you the glory and thank you now.
Thank you now.
In Jesus' name we pray again, and all the God's people say, "Amen."
Amen.
Amen. Go praise the Lord.